Good evening, welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council and I will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of Arizona And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the Call to the Audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right, we will now play a video conveying the city of Tempe's native land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you so much. That will move us to item number four, which is meeting minutes. Tonight I'll be assisted by Vice Mayor Garland. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for A1 to 4A2.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And Councilman Adams?
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, item 4B, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Vice Mayor Garland.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes for B1 to 4B8.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And that item also passes seven to zero. Next up, that brings me to item number five, Reports and Announcements. First up, I have 5A1, Reappointments and New Appointments to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission for the 2024-25 School Year. So we're actually going to have a slideshow here that's actually going to show the slides and the names and pictures of the appointees. And so I'm going to read out each commissioner's name and the school that they attend. Stella Cola from McClintock High School. Grace Wambacher from Corona del Sol High School. Grayson Mendoza from ASU Preparatory Academy Digital. Shruti Sawjit from Corona del Sol High School. Ezra Adams from McClintock High School. Tala Alshatree from McClintock High School. Brayden Castaneda from McClintock High School. Nikrika Shavan from McClintock High School. Kate Koberowski from Corona del Sol High School. Enes Rodriguez from Tempe High School. Andres Rosario Navarro from McClintock High School. Lily Sabo from Tempe Preparatory Academy. Bryn Taylor from Corona del Sol High School. Saren Yalchenkaya from McClintock High School. Nikandra Acosta from Tempe Preparatory Academy. And Margaret Gant from McClintock High School. Please give them all a big round of applause. So with the support of the city council, I would like to ask for a motion on item 7A1 to approve two reappointments and 14 new appointments to the city of Tempe Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and I believe seconded by Councilmember Adams. It's pretty close, but I'll go. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Chin? And that item also passes unanimously, seven to zero. I would like to see if I could get all the newly elected members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission to join me up front. Okay. Matter of fact, I will do this down here. There we go. Perfect. All right. So for all the new commissioners, I would love to see if you would raise your right hand and repeat. There we go. I, and state your name.
I, Tom.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the State of Arizona.
Of the State of Arizona.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Codes and ordinances.
Codes and ordinances.
Of the city of Tempe.
Of the city of Tempe.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
Of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission.
In and for.
In and for.
The city of Tempe.
The city of Tempe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God, or so I do affirm.
So help me God, or so I do affirm.
Congratulations.
So, most of you guys are my students as governing board members, so if you go to Tempe Union, you're one of my students. All right, so I'm excited to see y'all.
I was totally happy to bend, you know?
We appreciate you. We always do that.
All right, well. Next up, I have here, item 5A2, Recognition of 2024 State of Arizona Assistant Clerk of the Year Award to another than Karen Doncovio. We're going to throw up a little slide here. On July 23rd, the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association Executive Board awarded Karen Doncovio, Tempe's Assistant City Clerk. The Assistant Clerk of the Year Award for the State of Arizona. This award recognizes an assistant clerk who has made significant contributions to the professionalism and image of the member profession, including providing knowledge, mentorship, and education to AMCA members. Karen has been an invaluable member of the Tempe City Clerk team since May of 2019. Her professionalism and dedication are evident in her contributions to the community and ongoing professional support to members of the municipal clerks profession across the state of Arizona. Her extensive knowledge and experience in campaign finance responsibilities, elections administration, and records management have been paramount to ensuring efficient city clerk's office operations. She exemplifies leadership and excellence in her role as our Assistant City Clerk. Karen is a Master Municipal Clerk, State of Arizona Certified Election Officer, Certified Election Municipal Election Official, Certified Public Manager, and Society for Human Resource Management Certified Professional. That's a lot of titles, Karen. She is also an active member of the National Association of Government Archives and Records Administrators, International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and AMCA where she serves on the legislative, records, management, and campaign finance committees. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Management from Arizona State University, Go Devils, and a Master of Arts degree in Human Resources Management from Ottawa University. So please, everyone, please join me in congratulating Karen Doncovio on this well-deserved achievement.
Hey, I didn't. You said that, not me.
Before Karen leaves, I want to make sure though that we get her team down here to take a photo so council, we can slide out of the way. Let's get the clerks team down here with her, so.
Congratulations.
And I can tell you point blank, for all of us who have run for office at some point and have had to work with the clerk's office on a very regular basis, and I know our campaign folks and people all over the city, they always rave about the professionalism and excellence that Karen brings to this job each and every day. A lot of folks have said she is an absolute lifesaver, and I can tell you right now, I completely second that comment. She's an incredible person and we are so glad to have her part of the Tempe City Clerk's team. So Karen, thank you. And now get out of the way. Next up here, we have item 5A4, which is for Agent Orange Awareness Day. So this proclamation reads, "During the Vietnam War, the United States military used Agent Orange, an herbicide and a folate, as part of its tactical warfare strategy. And whereas the exposure to Agent Orange has resulted in the deaths of over 300,000 U.S. service members, in addition to the devastating and long-lasting health effects on millions of people..." I'll make sure our veterans can come join us up here for this presentation before I keep going, because I've got quite a bit left, so. So I'll go back to this paragraph here. "The exposure to Agent Orange has resulted in the deaths of over 300,000 U.S. service members, in addition to the devastating and long-lasting health effects on millions of people, including veterans, civilians, and their descendants, leading to severe illnesses such as cancer, birth defects, and chronic diseases. And whereas the impact of Agent Orange extends beyond physical health, causing deep emotional and psychological scars for those affected and their families. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to honor the courage and sacrifice of those who have suffered and died, and those who continue to suffer from the consequence of Agent Orange exposure. And whereas raising awareness about the effects of Agent Orange is crucial to ensuring that affected individuals receive the recognition, support, and justice they deserve, and to prevent such tragedies in the future. And on this day, we urge all citizens to join us in acknowledging the profound impact of Agent Orange, to support ongoing research and advocacy efforts, and to stand in solidarity with those whose lives have been forever altered by this toxic legacy. Let us commit to educating future generations about the consequences of chemical warfare, advocating for the health and well-being of those affected, and striving for a world where such suffering is never repeated. Together, we can honor the past, support the present, and build a safer, more just future for all. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare August 10th, 2024, as Agent Orange Awareness Day in Tempe, Arizona." And thank you so much for bringing awareness to this important issue, and of course, as always, thank you so much for your service to our country. All right, next up, we have the proclamation for National Service Dog Month. I saw some dogs entering, so I'm going to need them all to come down here for the photos, along with the owners as well. And council, I have a feeling you want to be in this photo. All right, so this proclamation reads, I can't get over this, it's like just so calm. "Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and inclusivity of all citizens. And whereas in the United States, 64 million adults and children have a disability, and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and that need is growing. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. And whereas the city of Tempe continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens and their service dogs are embraced. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2024 as National Service Dog Month in Tempe, Arizona." All right, and my last announcement of the evening is item 5A5, which is an appointment to the Neighborhood Advisory Commission. I want to congratulate Raymond Devine on his appointment to the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, as outlined in item 7A2 on this evening's agenda. I also just want to take a very quick point of personal privilege to say happy birthday to one of the incredible local small business owners in our community, Sue Rigler from Hundred Mile Brewing, who's celebrating her 60th birthday. I would not have announced it except she put it on the flyer, so I'm allowed to say that. But we love you, Sue, and just a short period of time, you've done an incredible amount for the city of Tempe, provided a great bar and restaurant, and a great gathering space, especially for a lot of our residents of North Tempe. So I wanted to make sure that I thanked you very publicly. Happy birthday. All right, next up, item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. No announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. That brings us to item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the podium shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. So once again, I'm going to call these cards in the order in which I receive them this evening. The first speaker I have is Anjali Swamy. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Respected Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Anjali Swamy. My name is Anjali Swamy, and I'm a resident of Arizona. On behalf of more than 4 million American Hindus, representing diverse ethnic and national origins, I stand here to share a very concerning development happening in the country of Bangladesh. Bangladesh is a Muslim-majority nation where 8% of its population is Hindu. That amounts to nearly 15 million people, but that was not always the case. Hindus used to be 20% of the population just 50 years ago in 1971. 2.8 million Hindus were killed in Bangladesh in just nine months by radical Islamists. Every time the country goes through a regime change and political instability, minorities, especially Hindus, are attacked. In the past month, after a regime change was executed in Bangladesh, there has been continuous violence targeting the minorities, and specifically the Hindu community. More than 200 incidents have been recorded by us in which many people have been killed. Some new data we received this week from Bangladesh is very disturbing. It is reminiscent of Nazi Germany where Jewish scholars and educators were humiliated and hounded by the Nazi brown shirts before the Holocaust began in 1939. Radical Islamist student mobs under the new government of Muhammad Yunus are hounding Hindu educators, humiliating them in public with religious slur, and forcing them to resign from their jobs. Even after a month, the violence continues unabated. As the Biden administration is considered close to the new regime, it is imperative that the White House and the State Department take full responsibility for the protection of Hindus and other religious minorities in Bangladesh. It is a humble and earnest request that the current administration acts decisively to prevent a recurrence of the atrocities that was witnessed during the 1971 genocide. In a powerful demonstration of bipartisan concern, some lawmakers from both sides of the aisle, representing Texas, California, Georgia, Michigan, and New York, have already requested that the State Department take steps to address this crisis. We must urge our members of Congress from Arizona, both in the Senate and in the House, to unequivocally condemn the brutal and widespread atrocities against Hindus and other minorities in Bangladesh, and bring... oversight to the actions of the Biden administration.
I'm sorry, that's time. But I was going to tell you really quickly too, I know we have a couple more speakers. Our chief diversity officer is not here this evening, but Tanya Chavez in the back. Can you raise your hand, Tanya? If you'd like to speak with her about that, so she can relay the message to Dr. Hume, so we can have further conversations, we can definitely, you could speak to Ms. Chavez in the back. So to want to make sure I gave you that information.
Thank you so much for giving me the time and space.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Absolutely. The next speaker I have is Atul Prasad Debnaath. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, esteemed members of the city council. I'm a resident of Arizona. So my name is Atul Prasad Debnaath, and I would like to extend my warmest greetings to you all on this auspicious occasion of Jarmastami. Today signifies the celebration of the birth of Lord Krishna, who incarnated on earth to protect the righteous, punish the wrongdoers, and reestablish balance in society. Today I stand before you as a representative of the oppressed Hindu community of Bangladesh, who are in dire need of help and support from the Lord himself, and also from all of you good people. The history of Bangladeshi Hindus is a tale of endless oppression. Since its independence in nineteen seventy-one, various regimes and governments have exploited the Hindu community for political gain, using their plight to rally support without implementing substantive measures to address their issues. While different administrations have promised the protection and equality, these commitments have frequently fallen short, leaving the Hindu minority vulnerable and marginalized. Reports from Human Rights Watch and other reputable sources highlight how repeated communal violence, forced conversions, and property dispossession have forced many victims to seek refuge abroad, reducing the Hindu population over the past decades. According to Bangladesh Bureau of Statistics, the Hindu population has declined from twenty-two percent in nineteen seventy-one to eight to ten percent in twenty twenty-two, a staggering decrease of roughly sixty percent of Hindu population. Given the persistent challenges faced by Bangladeshi Hindus, it is imperative that international organizations and governments step forward to offer support. The U.S. government and its allies can play a critical role by increasing diplomatic pressure on Bangladesh to ensure the protection of the minority rights. Furthermore, international bodies such as United Nations should enhance their monitoring and reporting mechanisms to hold accountable those who perpetrate violence and discrimination against religious minorities. We also call upon global human rights organizations to intensify their advocacy efforts, mobilize resources for affected communities, and raise awareness about the plight of Bangladeshi Hindus. It is crucial for the international community to come together to provide not only immediate relief, but also long-term support to address the root causes of persecution and help rebuild the lives those affected. In conclusion, the history of Hindu minorities in Bangladesh since nineteen seventy-one reflects a troubling pattern of oppression. As we celebrate Jarmastami today, let us reaffirm our commitment to justice and compassion. By calling for international support and action, we can help ensure the rights and dignity of Bangladeshi Hindus are upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tushar Malik. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Tushar Malik. I'm a city of Arizona. Thanks to the city council members for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Hindu community of Bangladesh. This is a rare privilege, as it is very difficult to give voice to the plights of minority Hindus in Bangladesh. I would like to add a few more points in addition to what has been covered by the prior speakers on the similar topic. Religion has played a very critical role in the politics of Bangladesh, more so since the largest Islamic party was introduced in a state power as a member of center-right coalition between two thousand and one and two thousand and six. Hated and persecution on the minority religious groups, especially Hindus, has increased significantly since then. Hindus are never allowed to exercise full religious freedom compared to the Muslims. There is a deep underlying sense of intolerance towards Hindus, since the Muslim population consider themselves superior for being the majority. Intimidation and violence is a widespread way of oppression against Hindus in any social or political volatile situations, such as transition of power, or natural disasters, or even in joyful Hindu religious festivals like Durga Puja. The number of violent attacks has increased significantly over time. A Bangladeshi human rights group, Ain of Shalishkendra, has reported at least three thousand six hundred seventy-nine attacks on the Hindu community between January two thousand thirteen and September two thousand twenty-one, including vandalism, arson, and targeted violence. Given current political turmoil in Bangladesh, especially after the fall of Sheikh Hasina government, more than two fifty cases of violence were reported, including heinous organized crimes of ruthless killings and gang rapes. Homes, shops, and temples are vandalized and looted. Hindus and other minorities have always been an easy target for Islamic extremists. Bangladeshi media fails to cover these violent attacks under political pressure. Many cases are outright dismissed as the propaganda of the fallen government and neighboring country, India. These violence against minority Hindus are clear violations of human rights. Everyone knows this in the country, but mostly deny it or try to ignore it, because that's not their problem. This culture of denial and cancellation includes the law and order system and justice system. In many cases, police do not want to file reports against the large powerful mobs, or victims want to avoid justice system to avoid further persecution against them. There are very few cases which have seen the light of justice, but even in those cases, the main culprits are given indemnity for having political connections. This culture of denial of justice has exacerbated the situation. Our humble request-
That's time, I'm sorry. But once again, we have Tanya's in the back. If you'd like to speak with her more, she can. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is David Sokolowski. Is he virtual this evening?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is David Sokolowski. I live in Tempe. You talk about real change, not spare change, but where is the real change? Where is the affordable housing? The entire narrative in the city needs to change, and its priorities. You're more concerned with paving the streets. Even though the rents have doubled, half the city is cost burdened, and people can't afford to buy a home. We need to build one hundred low-income units every thirty days. Anything less than that is tokenism, and more is always better. But currently, we're not keeping pace with population. I'm waiting to see what Tempe writes in its state housing report, required by SB eleven sixty-two, on the status and progress in meeting the municipality's housing needs. Are you going to explain to the state that it will take two hundred years to solve our housing shortage? The city of Tempe rightfully supports inclusionary zoning policy. In that case, we would build two hundred thousand units, and maybe solve the housing shortage in fifty years. In the meantime, Tempe lacks shelters, and has been reducing homelessness by deporting poor people out of the city. You use the term handoff, but in reality, you're ditching them in Mesa and you walk away. The city doesn't track long-term outcomes, unless you're promoting the city on social media. But in reality, we have no idea what happens to these people. Another issue is I can't find food anywhere in Tempe. I picked up a homeless food bag, and it's seven days' worth of sugar to one day of protein. Nobody can function eating only junk food. I don't expect these people to make rational choices, and I don't expect them to be productive members of society. We have people who are eating out of garbage cans, and stealing becomes a last resort when no other food is available. If Austin Davis stops feeding, crime will increase. You can't reverse Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and feeding the homeless does not enable homelessness. Removing food isn't effective. You're just making it more difficult by removing an essential component. Austin is providing an essential service that the city is capable of providing, but refuses to do so. It's really weird how feeding homeless people in Phoenix or Mesa does not enable homelessness, but feeding people in Tempe does. Is the TCAA enabling homelessness when they feed people packaged brownies? The best thing the city can do at this point is issue an apology to Austin Davis, grant his permit, and provide support to nonprofits operating in the city to provide healthy and balanced meals three times a day. Austin Davis is providing for the community, and he's literally saving lives. It's shameful that you're arresting him, when you should be honoring his dedication to improving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Dave Wells. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dave Wells. I'm from Mesa, just across one oh one, though. Mayor Woods and council members, I would prefer to be here under different circumstances, but after the city decided to arrest and jail Austin Davis for sharing food primarily with unsheltered people in city parks, I decided to get off the sidelines. I now devote my Sundays after Quaker meeting in Tempe to volunteering for four-plus hours at picnics. I've been working to improve logistics, especially related to helping folks access cold water, Gatorade, as well as cleaning up and hauling away trash, and I'm beginning to make some personal connections. The city should drop charges against Austin and make a fresh start, working with people like myself as inner mediaries, to come to a memorandum of understanding, so Tempe, which prides itself in being forward-looking, can return to a more forward-looking approach in this case. In two thousand and five, I worked with David Summers, the pastor of United Methodist Church, University Methodist Church, and the late Sue Ringler, who was Director of Operations at Tempe Community Action Agency, to help launch the Interfaith Homeless Emergency Lodging Program, IHAPP, which is now a model across the state. At the time, the city was nascent stages of its homeless program. Today, the city operates a transitional housing center and has HOPE teams essential to its approach. Yet at the same time, the city, which once lauded volunteer park outreach efforts from the Aris Foundation and AZ Hugs, has moved aggressively against these efforts in parks. A wide range of people experience homelessness. A significant number of people, of picnic attendees, do not trust the city and therefore the HOPE teams. AZ Hugs fills an itch that we should be working to improve instead of shut down. Trauma is something that many homeless people experience, not only in the streets, but in their life before then. It's something unfortunately I know very well, as my ex-wife and I adopted three siblings aged five, six, and seven from foster care in two thousand and two, and took them wherever we went. Simply having a loving home, or playing with Cory, or Kirsten, at political activities we attended did not save them. My youngest daughter succumbed to the impacts of early abuse at age seventeen, and my son, now twenty-nine, has struggled with self-esteem and substance abuse issues. I've kicked him out of my house four times, but it's always been temporary. He's had a safe landing spot. That's not the case for many on the streets. Last week, I visited a respite center at Locksboro Christian Church on the border of Glendale and Phoenix. Pastor Hope told me those using the center need to learn compassion for themselves. When you've been rejected over and over in your life, it reinforces a very negative self-image. It's something I also see when I do nonviolence workshops at Lewis Prison. We need to help people learn to love themselves by connecting with someone they trust. That's the magic that Austin provides. So let's step back and see if we can find a productive way forward, drop the charges, dialogue, and work together more constructively. Thank you.
Thank you. So we can't have a bunch of clapping. Thank you, Dr. Wells. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Tim Palmer. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, Tim Palmer, city of Tempe. I just want to make note, haven't heard a note yet, that our esteemed council member Randy Keating's not here.
He's virtual, actually. He's on-
I understand that. But I do want to say one thing to city manager. I haven't seen anything yet with regards to our traffic camera program, so I'm hoping that that gets implemented soon. But beyond that, you know, I always remind you that I'm a sixty-year resident of Tempe, and at this particular time, I'm, you know, not always in disagreement with the city of Tempe. Things sometimes bother me, but what bothers me right now, and it really goes way beyond being bothered, is what's happening to Austin Davis. You know, over the course of my sixty years here, I've never seen a situation like this, and it's very discouraging. And what I really would like to say is that the central tenets of I was raised Catholic, and the central tenets, the three central tenets of the Bible is faith, hope, and charity. And of those three, charity being the greatest, to serve man. And so it disturbs me that in the face of what should be happening in the city of Tempe is not happening in the city of Tempe, and the fact that this has escalated to this point is really, really disturbing. And I really ask the council to, you know, look within themselves and say, are we really moving Tempe forward, or are we staining the city of Tempe? So I'm asking, I'm humbly asking you that you please reconsider dropping the charges against Austin Davis, and try to find an equitable agreement on how to feed the homeless. It's my understanding that over six hundred thousand, not six hundred thousand, over six hundred people a year of homeless people pass away out in the homeless community. And I think that Tempe can do better. I know that you can do better, and I'm asking that you please do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. The next speaker I have is Lauren Cubey. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Lauren Cubey, Tempe resident, and good evening, Mayor and council. In the midst of this conflict with our city, I want to share some relevant facts with you, the Tempe residents here, and then the folks watching at home. The state of Arizona recognizes Austin Davis's nonprofit Arizona Hugs as a qualifying charitable organization, providing state tax credits to those who donate to his 501(c). The Arizona Department of Economic Security's homeless services program refers those in need to AZ Hugs. The Tempe Community Action Agency has a cooperative working relationship with AZ Hugs. Austin's Friday office hours at TCAA are seeing results, with service-resistant clients accepting help. TCAA reports that he's getting people into housing and into services. Most importantly, though, it's evident to many in the human services community that unhoused folks respect, love, and trust Austin. Establishing trust is often the first step in serving those who live on the streets. That Austin is a true resource to the unhoused hit home for me the night I hosted a fundraiser for his legal fund. While at my home, he reserved emergency calls for housing and transport to detox, both of which he jumped to fulfill. Austin is doing the work that needs to be done. He personifies the motto of the late, great John Lewis, who said, "Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get into good trouble, necessary trouble." Arizona Hugs is not the only nonprofit, though, that stepped up in time of need. We have the Aris Foundation at Mountain Park Health Center in Hope, Arizona, I'm on that group, with that group, where neighbors come together to offer monthly meals and fill in for Austin while he's being prosecuted. Sadly, across the country, we're seeing growing efforts to erect barriers, to criminalize not only homelessness, but the feeding of the homeless. Tempe is better than this. We've always put people's needs first. We've reached out to our neighbors. We've helped fundraisers. We've led the valley in innovative approaches to caring for one another. Can our city of compassion step back from prosecuting the selfless volunteer? Can we all come together and figure this out? I ask you, please, to drop the charges against Austin. Let's take the trust that Austin has built with our unhoused neighbors and put that trust to good use. The city could consider hiring him, or contracting with him to use Jenny's trailer, a solar-powered outreach trailer built with the generosity of Jenny Norton and the ingenuity of our ASU students. We can welcome Austin as the warm liaison to the unsheltered. The tension between the city and Austin is actually, it's a classic example of the color personality test that I learned in Tempe leadership. The city is gold, structured, rule-following, top-down, while Austin is a classic orange, creative, a little pushy, and grassroots. Gold versus orange are often at loggerheads. The city's structured approach conflicts with Arizona Hugs' softer approach. While each approach is incomplete by itself, together, we can leave, we can have the best of both worlds. Just one more minute.
I'm sorry, no, I can't. I'm sorry. That's time. That's three.
Austin represents the best of us, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up, I have Jane Parker. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes. We have three minutes.
My name is Jane Parker. I have lived in Tempe for 34 years, and I absolutely love Tempe, but I stand before you with a heavy heart to tell you that I'm not proud of my city because of the way you treat the homeless community and those seeking to help them like Austin. I am part of a nonprofit called Hope Arizona. We serve food, give them sleeping bags when it's cold, hygiene kits, and whatever else they need. I do this because I don't want to see people go hungry. Eating is what we need for survival, and denying that to anyone is wrong on so many levels. I think it is inhumane to let people go hungry when there's such an abundance of food and plenty of people who want to share it. I wish the mayor and the city council would be more compassionate to the homeless. They say the reason they don't want us to feed the homeless in the parks is about safety and residents complaining. Moore Park is seldom used, and it is not near any residences, so there's no one to complain. It's the ideal place to do it. We cannot afford the fees that you charge. I figured doing this once or twice a month like we did, it would cost us $5,000 a year. We don't have that kind of money. I think nonprofits should be exempt from any fees, and you only want to give us a dirt lot to do it in, which is unacceptable. There's no grass, no shade, and no place to eat. A pastor from a church in Chandler did it, and he said it was horrible, and he would never do it there again. It was rough terrain to get to it. There was a man in a wheelchair who couldn't even access it. I think the city of Tempe just wants the homeless to go away, but where are they going to go? Maybe the city could be an inspiration to other cities and show that they actually care about all people. I'm also asking you to drop the charges against Austin Davis. How do you go from getting an award from the city for feeding and helping the homeless to a few months later, being targeted by the city for doing the same thing? Sharing food is not a crime. Austin is the most humanitarian person I know. At just 24 years old, he is dedicating his life to helping the homeless. He doesn't just feed them, he helps them find resources to get into detox, rehab, shelters, and whatever else they need. They know Austin and they trust him, which is why they go to him instead of the city. The city is also complaining that the parks are not being kept clean. Austin went to the park one night after it was closed just to clean it, because the police kicked the homeless out before they had a chance to clean it, and they called Austin. So he was basically arrested and put in jail like a common criminal for cleaning the park after hours. I ask you from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of the hundreds of volunteers that step up every day to offer a bit of humanity.
That's time, I'm sorry. Thank you. The next speaker I have is Robert Moore. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Robert Moore, Tempe, Arizona, and I think my topic's a little offbeat tonight, so appreciate everyone's patience. I just want to bring your attention to item 4B on tomorrow evening's Development Review Commission agenda and ask for your support. The Electric Bat Arcade at 29 South Southern Avenue has requested an expansion permit for their small business at Denell Plaza in partnership with Yucca Tap Room. Local fine artist and educator Rachel Bess began this labor of love in 2018, blending art, pop culture, and technology, as she built a small collection of pinball machines into what is now an award-winning international destination for pinball enthusiasts while nurturing into existence the largest single-location pinball league on the planet. Electric Bat Arcade represents a long legacy of innovative and iconic minority-owned spawn business ventures at Denell Plaza that continues on to this day. I apologize, I think I deleted a paragraph. It is no coincidence that earlier this year, musician Chris Martinez opted to collaborate with the Yucca Tap Room in opening the Moody Black Food House, offering exceptional Tex-Mex comfort food, and that is majoritively run by members of the trans and queer community. It goes without saying that places that incubate diversity matter to our community. Places that have a long-term heritage of inclusion matter to our community. Places that nurture minority-owned businesses matter to our community, which is equally reinforced with our new 2050 general plan. Local or alternative creative hubs are often prone to displacement and gentrification. There also are numerous examples across the country and around the world where cities have bucked traditional development practices and found innovative ways to effectively respect and support these types of local scenes within thoughtful and community-forward redevelopment strategies. With this in mind, I would like to encourage mayor, council, and staff to continue involving Rodney Hugh and Sean Downey of Yucca Tap Room within every step of the plaza redevelopment process from the ground up. These are local small-business leaders who need to be guiding our future, because these are the people who are in the trenches strengthening the diversity of our community and make room for the next generation of entrepreneurs like Rachel Bess and Chris Martinez, so they can realize their own visions at Denell Plaza. In turn, I ask for your support on DRC Agenda 4B at tomorrow's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is James Growth. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hi, my name is James Growth. I live in Tempe, and my friend was recently hit by a car while riding his bike. He's okay, but I'm here because a crash that common sense said was clearly not his fault led to his getting a ticket and a fine. Here's what happened. He needed to turn left, so instead of merging through three lanes of traffic, he went and crossed with the crosswalk. That's what the vast majority of bikers would feel safe doing, and because he was on a knee bike, it was probably illegal. But his problem was that he crossed the street he was on and then the cross street, not the opposite, the cross street and then the street he was on. Even though it's common sense to cross the first street that has a walk sign, this is illegal, and it's what the police officer fined him for. Tempe has some rules for bikers which simply don't make sense, and they're pushing people away from biking and back to their cars. The law my friend broke is that bikes must ride on the sidewalk with traffic, not against it. I live just past an intersection, so to get to downtown Tempe, I generally bike on the sidewalk for a few hundred feet. To follow the law, I'd need to go out of my way and U-turn, adding half a mile to every trip I took on a bike. In the most extreme case, for someone who wanted to visit a friend just up the road on South Price Street, this law would turn a 700-foot ride with zero intersections into over a mile-long journey crossing eight arterial streets, just to follow the law. Another law: bikes aren't allowed on sidewalks if there's a bike lane. Of course pedestrians should feel safe on the sidewalk, but consider a journey that's 95% on our beautiful canal trails, and the last bit is on an arterial to a grocery store. For that section, I could bike in a five-foot-wide bike lane with bumps and debris, using half that space, and 55 mile-an-hour traffic whizzing by on the other side; two, bike on the sidewalk, which probably has no pedestrians on it, but which is illegal; or three, get in a car and drive. Laws like this are pushing people off of bikes and into cars. My friend had to take a diversion course for his ticket. I and many other bikers I know have had to do the same. It starts with a stat that goes something like, 70% of bike crashes are the bikers' fault. When 70% of the students in a class fail, that's cause to investigate the teacher. In this case, we need to rethink whether these laws are creating a Tempe where transportation outside of a car is easy, efficient, and enjoyable. Here are some starting points for a ground-up rethink based on common sense. When drivers turn, they have to yield to people walking in both directions. They should have to do the same with bikers. People walking and biking can negotiate spaces surprisingly well. Bikers should be able to go fast on an empty sidewalk and then slow down as they pass people walking. Once that's done, we need better training for police officers. My friend said that the officer told him cars, they look left and they look right, they just don't see you. That's unacceptable, and it's not how we get to Vision Zero. I'm not trying to blame the officer, but these things show a perspective coming squarely from the inside of a windshield. The ironic thing is the person driving thought that he was at fault when he hit my friend. That's also common sense. The crosswalk had the right of way, and he turned into it. Why do we have bike laws that are more punitive to people on bikes than the common sense of the people who just hit them with their car? Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. The next speaker I have this evening is Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
My name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. During 2023, there were 12 fatal DUI accidents in Tempe, and there was many more injured. Given law enforcement issues like that, I question, I question the priorities of Tempe when it concerns prosecuting people like Austin Davis for providing services to the homeless. An official Tempe statement stated, quote, "The mayor and council are not prosecuting Austin Davis." Cory, that is not true, and that has your evasive fingerprints all over it. Not only do the mayor and council fund the city attorney, they also are responsible for managing them, okay? And there is such a thing as prosecutor discretion, and I want to cite Attorney General Chris Mace as an example. She was elected Attorney General, okay? There was an abortion law from the territorial days that her opponent said he was going to enforce. When she took office, she says, "I am not going to enforce it." That's what she did. She had the courage to do that, Cory, and you don't. And as far as I can see from Austin Davis, okay, I have more background in what he's doing, and you can smile all you want, Cory, I've been in your jail across the street there, and I see what goes on there, okay? And I was arrested for a DUI. It was not proven. Your city attorney is telling me that the reason I was not prosecuted is some expert witness, DUI witness, did not have enough expertise to show up in the court. Well, if you don't have, get a witness that has enough expertise to show up in a court, what are we doing? How come you have the resources to prosecute Austin Davis? And I don't, I do not appreciate, you know, you shirking your accountability. You are supposed to be accountable and transparent, and you are not doing that, and you are doing our city a disservice. And I would appreciate it if you're going to prosecute Austin Davis, at least be candid enough, be forthright enough to say, yes, we are prosecuting him. That's exactly what you're doing. That's what I'm doing with my tax dollars. I acknowledge that, but I don't think it should be spent that way, and there is a much better way of handling this than the way you are right now, and it's a disgrace to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Alex Monti. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Alex Monti, fifth-generation resident of the Valley and a homeowner in South Tempe. City Council and city manager, Chelsea, have decided that we, the people of Tempe, no longer should provide mutual aid to our own communities. The city's healthy-giving policy seeks to divert resources given freely between citizens and funnel it through the Tempe government. They have inserted themselves between the charitable and the needy as a paternal figure while demonizing those on the streets and shaming those who just want to help. They equate the unhoused to raccoons or bears, and that giving them food or money is actually hurting them. The city is overreaching in their control of public spaces owned by the citizens of Tempe. AZ Hugs utilizes a mostly unused public park. Many of you have probably never been there. Moyer Park sits on a hill on the southeast corner of Mill Avenue in Rio Solado. The park consists of a few remadas with concrete tables. The remadas are flanked on one side by a parking lot and the other side by a steep, grassy hill that comes down to Mill Avenue. There are no houses that border the park, just two major streets and Tempe Town Lake down a steep flight of stairs. There are no place structures, no benches, no hiking paths, no gardens, and no water features. It's little more than a parking lot on a hill. The city threatens our right to assemble there with their dishonest use of very broad justifications such as public safety and health and well-being, especially without referencing any documented incidents. It's a deliberate tactic to associate the unsheltered community with drugs, needles, garbage, and a threat to neighborhoods, things that would exist with or without AZ Hugs. Austin Davis and all the volunteers at AZ Hugs ensure that they clean up after every picnic. I know because I've been there, and I would ask that each of you go and attend a picnic there and see how the volunteers clean up after themselves. The city's attack on Austin Davis is vindictive and petty. The reason given for denying the permit was because AZ Hugs continued to hold the picnics while the city came to its determination. The AZ Hug picnics were denied a permit because they refused to stop serving essential meals that the unhoused community has come to rely on for the past three and a half years. The city escalated the criminalization of mutual aid by trespassing Austin Davis from the park. They used police surveillance to intimidate Austin, even as he sat on the hot sidewalks outside the park to provide aid. And despite his attempts to stay off of the park property, police followed Austin to his residence to arrest him with multiple unfounded trespassing charges. After a night in jail, the city prosecutor argued for the maximum bond to be placed on Austin, even though he does not pose a risk to the community.
That's time.
Oh, thanks.
The next speaker I have is Jack Maverick. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Hello again, guys. I'm Jack, I live in Tempe, Arizona, and I'm just going to pick up where she left off. Look, Tempe's tactics against Austin Davis are not new, and they're being used in many cities across the US deliberately trying to displace and discard the unshelter. Our dear missing member here, Randy Keating, ran on reducing homelessness by 31%, but most of them just got displaced to Mesa or to Phoenix. Entire states like California under Gavin Newsom are feeling emboldened by the latest abhorrent ruling by the Supreme Court, Johnson versus Grant's pass, that now allows state authorities to raid and destroy encampments for our unhoused neighbors. The city of Tempe should not feel so emboldened in this case. We're going to fight this, fight for the right to provide food and resources to one another, just like Micah's Way in Santa Ana, California, the Rock Church in Castle Rock, Colorado, and we'll take this to a higher court if you refuse to do the right thing now. And just like St. Timothy's Episcopal Church versus the city of Brookings, Oregon, we will win the right to continue to serve meals without restrictions, a permit, or unjustified prejudice policing. AZ Hugs, like was stated, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit recognized in the state of Arizona as a tact-exempt organization, and the city's campaign to paint Austin Davis as a dangerous person who encourages the unhoused to refuse services is patently untrue. The city is reaching out to employees of the city, former employees of the city, to write op-eds and weird columns in AZ Capital Times, making wild, unfounded claims about, you know, drugs and trash, and that the city and the neighbors feel threatened by the existence of the... Austin Davis isn't making them in a factory somewhere. If he's not feeding them, they're still going to be there. And so I understand that your guy's new communication policy is to not engage with the public directly anymore, but to just tout, well, here's what we're doing, right? And some of the stuff that you guys are doing are great, it's wonderful, it's necessary, right? Stuff like hometown for all and whatnot, but your healthy-giving policy is insulting, right? To say, hey, listen, I know you want to help people who are on the side of the road, I know you want to help people with a dollar, I know you want to feed somebody, but you're actually hurting them. You're delaying them from getting services. I would love each and every one of you to try to access those services after you haven't eaten all week, after you've been out in 110-degree heat. You're going to fill out 20 minutes' worth of paperwork and wait 12 weeks to get into a shelter? I don't think so. So we're asking the city not to stop hometown for all and not to stop those programs. We're saying, let us take care of each other. Leave us alone. You don't need to be involved in that process at all. Have a great day.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Philip Yates. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Phil Yates, and I'm the president for Riverside Neighborhood Association. And, look, I've met this guy, I'm sorry, I've met Austin on a number of occasions now and heard his situation, and it's really sad. And I really do think that everybody on the city council and our mayor has a chance to use this as an example of how we are willing to look into things and look into these people that can give their time, their effort, to go to these parks and just give food that they've been given for free, help the people that are homeless. It is over 110 degrees. This is the hottest year on record in Arizona, and more people died in This is the hottest year on record in Arizona, and more people died in Maricopa County because of heat-related incidents than have in the inner time whatsoever. We really need to think about how we can help the homeless rather than demonize the people that are willing to spend the time to give to the people that are most in need. And I really hope that we consider going to the courts and pushing that this all be dropped. We can actually use it as an example of why we're going in the right direction. If we drop this and say, you know what, sometimes the courts are not right, and a whole lot of people said that that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, I apologize if I mispronounce this, is Mahadiven Ivor. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Woods and fellow community members and council members. I am Mahadair, 19 years old, born and raised in Tempe. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm here to appeal to our shared values of compassion, unity, and responsibility as we face the challenge of homelessness in Tempe. This isn't just about policy. It's about the people in our community who need our help. Access to food and water is not only a basic human right, but it's also a fundamental biological need. And after taking Bio 101 in ASU, I know this, without food and water, we die. We may have different ideas on how to address this issue, but we all share the same goal, to help those in need. Let's work together and be creative in finding solutions. By combining our efforts, whether through city programs or grassroots initiatives like AZ Hugs and Hope Arizona Chapter, we can accomplish so much more. Other cities have shown that when governments and communities collaborate, they can create sustainable solutions. Tempe can be at the forefront of this effort. But to make this happen, we must not criminalize compassion. I urge the city not to penalize individuals like Austin Davis of AZ Hugs, whose sole intent is to serve food to those in need. His actions come from a place of care, and we should be encouraging not suppressing such efforts. I mean, we are trying to build a community here. We got to remember that we are stronger together. By uniting our resources and ideas, we can provide immediate relief and long-term pathways to recovery through housing, job training, mental health services, and other essential resources. Denying them basic resources is not the way to go forward. Together, we can create a safer, more compassionate Tempe for everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Audrey Bigay. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Audrey Bigay. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm here to be heard as a citizen of Arizona. I have become homeless in June of 2024. Due to mistreatment from a family member for my kids, I stood up for my kids. My sister didn't like it. She kicked us out. So June of 2024, we have been homeless, and I went to a park and got ahold of other homeless people, and they gave me a phone number to call. I called this phone number, and they helped me with shelter for that night for me and my kids. I have an 18-year-old and a 13-year-old. And I'm here because of the trauma and the experience that I've had at Mercy House on 2101 East Apache Boulevard. It's like, there's a lot of these shelters that are makeshift and granted 72 million to Tempe shelters. The shelter claims they help and provide. The shelters take in singles and families, but they say they're running out of fundings and they don't have diapers or, you know, the basic necessities. They tell us to save our money. We can't save our money because we have to buy the basic necessities. We are only allowed one roll of tissue per week and no sanitary pads for my girls. So the staff there are entitled, they make their own rules, and joke about other people's struggles and suffering. The staff there are mean, and they abuse their authority, and they say that they are the top people that run the shelter. So we are being misled by the people that work at these shelters. We were told about rules and policies. It was hard for me to know who and what their positions were because I wasn't told when I was, when I got there. When we checked in, they had three staff come up to me saying that they're to provide, the supervisor, the manager, and the head person of the shelter. They came to me and told me that I couldn't bring in my luggage. So they told us one suitcase per person, and we didn't have any clothes, and that was the whole reason why we went to go get clothes. And, but yeah, the security there, they watch us go through our belongings to separate our clothing. We got to our room, we were assigned a room. There were holes in the walls, there was roaches and everything everywhere.
I'm sorry, that's time, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I was thinking too, yeah, to that point. I'm wondering, Madam City Manager, is there a way that we could connect her with someone from the city? So Tim Birch in the back, actually, with the white shirt on the back. If we could connect with him, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, and I apologize too if I, if I mispronounced the name here, Kiadri Ben?
Kiadri.
Kiadri, okay. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Dear members of the council, my name is Kiadri, daughter of Audrey Bigay. I am a native of Arizona. I come to you today to share my concerns of living in nonprofit shelters. My experience in Mercy House on 2101 East Apache Boulevard, Tempe AZ, I have witnessed the traumatizing act of Mercy House security guards literally dragging men screaming down and flying stairs, and also witnessed mothers with young children or babies get made fun of and thrown out of, out to the mercy of the streets. I've seen the staff abuse their authority and mock people of lower class. They also say their supervisors or managers misleading others to believe what they say they are but aren't. There is no activities for children but a little shelf. There is no counseling or really anything to get the children out of the rooms instead of being cramped in a room while the mother or father is trying to find resources and homes for a roof over their head, for their kids in their own heads. There's holes in the walls that they don't bother to fix, the ice machine doesn't work, and one of the washers don't work. They know that there's women and kids, but they don't pry, they don't provide pads or diapers. I slept on an air mattress using a bed cover for a blanket. They lie about not having food boxes when they just got a shipment. The shelter is infested with crickets and roaches, they say, to keep it clean and save money, but don't provide cleaning supplies. We have to buy them ourselves. If I was the shelter, I would add, one, proper hygiene, two, counseling our groups for kids 18 and under, three, more resources for cleaning supplies, and five, better staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Jessica Walborn. Or Walburn, I should say. Is Jessica here?
I'm here.
Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Jessica Walburn. I'm a Tempe resident, and I am also the Safety Outreach Coordinator for a local nonprofit called AZAA and HPI for Equity. Woo, I just want to give a shout out to y'all. You did great. Thank you so much for your truth. I'm just gonna, I literally did this last minute, so I'm just gonna go over bullet points and notes just to make you guys aware of what's really going on out here, and whoever's watching at home, I need you guys to really know what's going on. So where do I start? I'll start with Austin. The AZ Hugs, to date, has assisted over 121 individuals into detox facilities, over 62 individuals into rehabs, 90 families into shelters, over 20 people into safe houses, 18 to sober living, has helped 31 families with rental assistance, helped 13 individuals... Where's the continuation? Who knows? The point is, he definitely is putting up numbers and really creating solutions for folks and transitioning them into a better place all by himself with no financial help from the city. Thank you for that, by the way. I also just want to make point, geez, Jess, you're everywhere. That's all right. Let's see here, I'm gonna go to my bullet points. As somebody who lives in Tempe, affordable housing is very challenging to find in Tempe because they require you to have three times the monthly rent. So even if it does exist, it's impossible to get in. So I don't know if there's something we can do about maybe lowering it to two times or two and a half times and putting that restriction on it. The Point and Count, which declares that it's decreased homelessness by 34%, I volunteered for that project, and it was very clear that it was during the hottest time of the day, pretty much, and the hottest time of the year. So most of the unhoused folks are not going to be outside or really visible. Not to mention that anybody who interacted with the Hope team member absolutely did not like them. It was very difficult to even get any type of information from them. So, yeah, I don't, Hope doesn't have a very good reputation as far as I'm concerned, and I'm with the unhoused every single day, every hour of the day if need be, very much alongside Austin and his work that he's doing. So I, I do know the reputation, and it's not very good. So with that being said, you guys heard from Audrey and Kiadri, which are some members of, of our We Imagine Safety program that we've been supporting through their entire journey. So the conditions over at the Mercy House or Sousa Espacio, we don't know what to call it.
I'm sorry, your time's up. Also, Tim Birch is our Community Health and Human Services Director. If you'd like to chat with him too, he can actually help. So thank you. The next speaker I have is Sebastian Del Portillo. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, good, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Sebastian Del Portillo, and I'm the campaign manager for the Take Back Our Homes campaign. Last time I was here, we worked with you all to pass a ban on source of income discrimination. That was a great day, and today I stand before you to express my support and our campaign's support for Austin Davis and AZ Hugs and their mission to feed the homeless. Their work is not just an act of kindness, but it's a vital lifeline for many individuals that are on the streets today. We have an eviction crisis on our hands. We have over 7,000 evictions being filed every month in Maricopa County. That's an insane number, and we have one of the fastest eviction systems in the entire country. That's why our campaign, Take Back Our Homes, is currently fighting for a right to counsel on evictions in the city of Phoenix because 94% of landlords have attorneys, attorneys in court when only 1% of tenants do. The odds are stacked against poor and working-class people, and to the many that fall through the cracks in the system, what exists is often not enough, as we've been hearing all night. And while we are working on stopping the courts and sheriffs from forcibly removing people from their homes, groups like AZ Hugs and Austin are supporting people downstream in real time. They need to be able to continue and grow their efforts in supporting people who have gone through the eviction system. And instead, what I'm hearing tonight is that Tempe is criminalizing these efforts, and that is really disheartening and disappointing to hear. That's why we are calling on you to drop the charges against Austin, allow AZ Hugs to continue their invaluable work uninterrupted. I firmly believe that these charges and restrictions are counterproductive, really, to the compassionate goals that we all are wanting, wanting to achieve. So instead of penalizing those who dedicate their time and resources to helping those in needs, we should be working with and supporting their efforts. You know, we just heard some of the metrics to back up the work that AZ Hugs is doing, and just follow their story on Instagram, and you'll see that the work that they're doing matters. So, you know, let's stop the persecution of this group. Tempe is better than this. Many people have said it. We believe in you all to do better than this. Please join us and drop the charges against Austin. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all the speaker cards that I have this evening for public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience? Do you want to come forward? I was gonna move, you're, you're here for item 8b4, correct? Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna move those two items forward. I have two other ones with speakers, but I'll just, I'll move those forward immediately afterward, so. Okay, so anyone else on public appearances? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting, and I will move, there are a couple of items I did want to move forward where I've got, I've got people who need to speak, just so they don't have to be here all night, so. The first item I'm going to move forward here is item 8b4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicle and Multimodal Traffic, Article 5 Speed Regulations, Section 19-63, Speed Limits enumerated of the Tempe City Code. This is a public testimony, a public hearing item, so we're taking public testimony this evening. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8b4? If so, please get my attention. Come on forward, yep. Good evening. Please state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to make a quick comment on this item. As a cyclist, I am all for it because it tremendously reduces the mortality rate in case of accident. I think it also aligns with our vision zero and the safety corridors, but I do think it should be paired with enforcement, now strict enforcement, because cars are already going way above the speed limit today and not just within these streets, like in Tempe in general. So why would they go any slower, you know, once we lowered those speed limits? So I would encourage you to, you know, paired with, with these limits, decreases also increase the enforcement in these areas for this change to be successful.
Thank you, appreciate it. Do I have any other speakers this evening on item 8b4? Yes, please come forward and state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes. There was a question here from Councilman Bradham about what is the dog's name?
Hi, everyone. This is Cujo. Mayor, council, city staff, thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments today. I just want to say I fully support lowering the speed limit. It'd be great if it was done throughout the entire city. I will say this will only work if you enforce it, though. Unfortunately, I don't really see a lot of cars that are doing well over 20 over the speed limit or 30 over the speed limit getting pulled over. I, I mean, for lack of a better term, if Tempe police could start handing out tickets like Pez, that would be great, because I think it would keep pedestrians safer, cyclists. I can't tell you how many times people drift into the bike lane when I'm riding my bike, and usually they're on their cell phones. If it's a 35, I can guarantee you they're doing usually 55 or higher, but I just want to say I fully support the speed limit change, and hopefully you do this across the entire city. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to let you know, Kelly, that I'm now going to have the Pez dispenser in my head for the rest of the evening because of that, so. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on item 8b4? All right, hearing none. I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Council members, any comments or discussion? Okay, there's no vote. Okay, there's no vote this evening on this item. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for September 19th, 2024. Now let me move to the other item here where I know we've got a couple of cards. That item is Item 8B9. And that is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code by adding Section 22-18 to Chapter 22, prohibiting the possession and sale to minors of brass knuckles or any device made of metal, plastic, or any hard material designed to fit over and around the knuckles or fingers of the human hand to enhance the power of a punch for aggressive fighting with the intent to cause injury. I've got two speaker cards this evening. The first one I have is from Bridget Vega. Please come forward and state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bridget Vega, Gilbert, Arizona. We must confront the uncomfortable truths within our communities. We cannot turn to blind eye to teen violence nor the struggles our teens face every day. I stand here to be a voice for the voiceless and for the children. We, as a community, support the brass knuckle ordinance. Thank you to the council member, Hodge, for taking the lead to bring this ordinance to light. Again, as a community, we thank you, Tempe, for looking at banning the sale of brass knuckles of all material for minors, as we've seen them used in so many cases across not just the East Valley, but the state. Connor Jarnigan, a victim of brass knuckles attacking Gilbert, wishes he could be here tonight, but he's in full support of this ordinance. Connor was robbed and brutally assaulted by brass knuckles outside of an In-N-Out. He continues to take a stand in the face of adversity and be a beacon of hope for the community. As he continues to fight at the state level to pass the ban on this deadly weapon, Connor Jarnigan had to have his scalps stapled back together when he was assaulted with the weapon in December of 2022. He testified at the State Senate. I'm hoping both sides of the aisle, Republicans and Democrats alike, can come together on this issue and help Arizona become a safer place without providing teens and other criminals easy access to this deadly weapon like brass knuckles. As Connor ended up having to get again staples in the back of his head, doctors told him that if this injury had just been an inch to the left, he could have been paralyzed or killed. Please continue to keep the families who've been directly affected in your prayers. Our youth deserves justice. Please, Tempe, rise up. We have no future if we don't protect the children. We're gonna leave these orange bracelets not only for justice for Preston Lord, but also they represent taking a stand against teen violence and senseless acts of violence. Thank you.
Thank you. The other card I have this evening is from Charisia Arnold. Or be it Charisia, I want to make sure I get this right, though.
It's all good. It's Carissa.
Carissa, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time tonight. Under Arizona law, minors are currently allowed to purchase and carry brass knuckles. Brass knuckles have been used to significantly injure kids. There are instances where kids could have been paralyzed or lost their life had the brass knuckles been moved over just a small distance. Once a child has been assaulted, they live in fear. They're afraid to go to school. They're afraid to go out and do normal teenage things. They're afraid just to be with their friends. It literally affects every avenue of their life and they worry constantly about whether or not this will happen again. Outside of a school policy, there isn't anything preventing a student from carrying brass knuckles on a school campus. They have the ability to pull them out of their pocket and show them in a sense of intimidation. They can easily walk up behind another kiddo and hit him across the back of the head, as Bridget just shared. I had a child that was assaulted and bullied to the point that she contemplated taking her life. Even though my child was not assaulted by using brass knuckles, I am all too familiar with the pain that families of assault victims walk through and what they live with. I want to ask that you imagine your child being put in that situation. How would you, as a parent, feel if your child was a victim? What would your goals and desires be to keep your child safe? Would you want to see another minor protected from the same circumstance your child walked through? So I please ask that you consider this ban for minors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, once again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else wishing to give public testimony on Item 8B9? All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I'm gonna turn to Council, Councilman Adams.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, when my brother was young, he was hit by brass knuckles and he had to have eye surgery. It was lucky that he got eye surgery really fast because he would have gone blind. So I personally know of what the results of brass knuckles are. I was a very little girl at the time and he was older than me and it was a lot of trauma for our entire family. So I will be supporting this ordinance and I appreciate you bringing it forward and coming over and speaking to us about it. And I'm proud to wear the bracelet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodge.
Well, I just want to thank everybody who was in the audience today about the brass knuckles. I'm also a governing board member for Tempe Union. I want to make sure that you guys understand that Tempe Union will be looking at this now that if it passes in our city, that we definitely will be having a resolution that will work on the school district at the same time. I'm gonna continue on. I want to be able to help not just in our city, but I'm gonna go out to other cities. We've already started, I already started this conversation with other cities to make sure this is throughout the whole state of Arizona. Because you're right, if we have to change it one city at a time, if the state legislature is not ready to do it, then we do it one city at a time. And this is what I'm willing to do to continue on. I want to thank my assistant right here, Sapan, who did a lot of work on it along with Tanya Chavez. So thank you guys so much for all the work you guys did on it. You know I'm definitely supporting it tonight. I'm very happy and passionate about this and I will continue to fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the council members, any further comments? Just a note too-
Oh, yes, and I have my bracelet.
Oh. Just a note too, that the, there's no vote this evening, but the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 5th, 2024. Okay, with that said, I'm gonna go back here to the Consent Agenda, which is listed as Item Number 7 on this evening's agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the Consent Agenda is listed as miscellaneous Items 7A2 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, Items 7B1 through 7B35, and resolutions, Items 7C1 through 7C11. But just as a reminder, Item 7A1 has already been voted upon by the council to approve the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission appointments. So once again, just want to state, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for a separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, council, any agenda items that you'd like to have removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
So moved.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Garland. With that, please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that item also passes 7 to 0. All right, next up, I'm gonna go back to-
Go back to your computer.
Mr. City Attorney, Madam Clerk, do you remember if we voted on Item 7A1?
Yes, we did that vote. It was in your script, so, yeah. It was a while ago.
I believe, I believe we did, but I couldn't remember either. So, thank you, Councilmember Chin. All right, that's gonna take us back to Item 8, which is the NonConsent Agenda. All items listed on the NonConsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, what will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter and the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form at this time. So first up, we have Item 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item under the section is 8A1, which is to ratify the annual excess insurance renewal program administratively approved by the Risk Management Trust Board for coverages including property damage, auto physical damage, workers' compensation, public entity liability, cyber liability, dam and bridges, and environmental pollution for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to ratify the utilization of one-year National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point Cooperative Contracts with Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T Corporation, and T-Mobile USA for the purchase of various wireless devices and airtime services. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge? Seconded by Vice Mayor Garland? Please vote.
Yes.
And that passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to ratify a contract increase with High Tech Network and Security Solutions LLC to provide Cisco Networking and Voiceover Internet Protocol Equipment and Services. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Adams? Seconded by Councilmember Hodge? Please vote.
Yes.
That item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to approve the utilization of a one-year state of Arizona Cooperative Contract with Premise One LLC for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of building security systems. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
A motion to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams? Seconded by Vice Mayor Garland? Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A5, which is to ratify the utilization of a five-year state of Arizona Cooperative Contract with AT&amp;T Enterprises LLC for the purchase of a new 911 communication system, services, and related equipment for the police department. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge? Seconded by Councilmember Adams? Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A6, which is to ratify the award of one-year contracts with four one-year renewal options to Rebel Oil Company Incorporated, doing business as ROC, Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC, and Supreme Oil Company for the purchase of vehicle and equipment fuels. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams? Have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amber? Please vote.
I didn't know that.
Is that the first second, Councilmember Amber?
That's, I think that's what Councilmember Hodge was pushing over there, so. And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A6, which is to ratify the award of one-year contracts with four one-year renewal options to Rebel Oil Company Incorporated, doing business as ROC, Saratoga Rack Marketing LLC, and Supreme Oil Company for the purchase of vehicle and equipment fuels. Oh, that was one I already read?
Yeah.
Never mind, forget that. Forget I ever said it. The next item under the section is actually 8A7, which is to award a professional services design and post-design contract to Intelis Incorporated for Project Number 5499742M, pavement quality index acceleration for pavement preservation and rehabilitation work in the city right of way. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Amber, seconded by Councilmember Chin? Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. Next up, Item 8A8, which is to award a professional services design and post-design contract to Douglas Fredrickson Architects Incorporated for Project Number 6410781 Clubhouse Project, Ken McDonald Golf Course. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge? Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 8A9, which is to award a professional services contract to Dibbitl Associates Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Project Number 320202, actually 3202024A, waterline replacement citywide. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
I'll motion to approve.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Adams? Seconded by Councilmember Chin? Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes 7 to 0. The last item under the section is 8A10, which is to award job order number 8 to Caliente Construction Incorporated for Project Number 630549IT, Kiwanis Park North Improvements Dog Park, located at 5500 South Mill Avenue.
Motion to approve.
And I second it.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Hodge? Yes, question, Vice Mayor Garland?
I just wondering, I'm not sure who'd ask this. Does this, the landscape, does it include trees?
Anyone? Let's see, Alex?
Thank you, Alex. I'm asking on behalf of the pets, the dogs. Thank you, Councilmember Chin. For trees.
The simple answer is yes. So there'll be trees, there'll be irrigation work, there's some other shade structure, there's some dog agility elements, as well as a water feature.
Okay, because I saw in the information, the packet that we got, it said shade structures, but I wasn't sure, and it said landscape, but I wasn't sure that it included trees and I just wanted to check that. But I appreciate it. It looks amazing, the more shade, the better, and the ADA accessible sidewalks is great. So thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all I had, sorry.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, any other questions from council on this item?
I just really want to thank staff for the Dog Park in Kiwanis. I've, we've been, I've leaned this effort for six years. Craig's shaking his head like, yeah, I know. So anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, any further comments? Oh, Councilman Hodge?
Yeah, on behalf of Jackson the dog and Mariah the dog, my babies, they said thank you too.
Okay, sounds good. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
And that item also passes 7 to 0. Okay, the next section on the NonConsent Agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no substantive votes will be taken. The seconded hearings and votes are scheduled for September 5th, 2024, or September 19th, 2024. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from CSS and R4 to MU4, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new eight-story mixed-use development consisting of 277 dwelling units within 578,773 square feet of building area on 3.81 acres for Vale Student Housing, located at 921 East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Snell and Wilmer LLP. And I see Nick Wood. Good evening, sir.
Mayor, members of the council, Nick Wood, Snell and Wilmer, one is Washington Street, and I represent Gilbane. The property is at the southeast corner of the intersection of Apache and Rural. And of course, this is student housing central. You can see the site, it's a combination of the Moxie Hotel, which of course will be demolished, but the CVS Pharmacy will not be touched. It'll continue to operate as it has for quite some time. As you're all aware, back about 11 years ago, we did the District. Then following that, across the street to the north, we did the Carmen. And then we did the Apollo, right, which is in the upper right-hand corner. My client, Gilbane, also did the Apollo. So they have a proven record of performance, great operation, good management. You know, we'll of course enter into a security plan with the Tempe Police, as we always have with all the student housing projects. And then at the end of last year, of course, we did the Marshall, which is just right next to Feet's Fish and Chips. Again, here's a little bit closer shot of the site, and as I said, it'll just be the Moxie that'll be affected, not the CVS. The general plan amendment that was just done earlier this year permits this density, so we're not having any general plan amendment applications. We're changing the zoning from what is currently CSS to MU4. Here is basically our conceptual site plan and landscape plan. As you can see, everything to the left is where the Moxie is today, everything to the right is where CVS is. There's two entry points, curb cuts. One is toward the upper right-hand corner between the CVS and OS, coming off of Rural. And then there's the same curb cut that will remain there today that's on Apache. Basically, the parking structure is what we call a wrap, so it'll be hidden from view. And you can see that we have a very large bike storage area that's specific for the students. And you can see where we have the ground level activity area, but more importantly, over on Spence, we have no curb cuts. And working with- Um, the project data table, it's 3.81 acres, we're at 73 dwelling units breaker for 277 units, 865 bedrooms. The breakdown in bedrooms is we have seven studios, uh, 26 ones, 63 twos, 18 threes, and 163 fours. Um, building height, very similar to the other projects I pointed out with Deception of the Rise, which is 15 stories. The rest of them are eight-story projects at 90 feet. Um, the step down along Spence, we have 44 feet, uh, which is basically floors 1, 2, 4, then it steps up to 65 from floors 5 and 6, and then eventually steps up off of Spence to the 7 and 8. Uh, 60% lot coverage, um, 357 spaces for 865 bedrooms, that's a .41 ratio, uh, which is pretty good. Um, the Marshall, if you recall, was .31. Uh, 312 bicycle spaces and 51, uh, CVS parking spaces. Again, we want to make sure that we're not affecting CVS's operations. Um, here's an example of the step downs on the Spence side. Again, we have four stories to six stories to eight stories. Um, amenity space, you know, at ground level, it's surrounded by, by the buildings themselves, it's all passive activity area. We want areas for the students to just be able to have some quiet time. And then of course, up on top of the parking structure is where the active area is, with the pool and the outdoor areas, clubhouses, et cetera. But you're seeing that bottom right-hand corner, the yellow outline of that area, again, it's away from any residential areas. We have it pushed back quite a ways. Um, the, the architecture, it's, it's, it's gone through some evolutions. Um, Phil Amorosi and Matt were very helpful with us in trying to, you know, design and redesign this. Um, and so again, I, I applaud their contributions. But as you can see, we have sort of a sense of a rival, uh, very nice architectural element on the corner, it's the CVS is on the left. And of course, we have a lot of articulation, different colors, different breakups, different materials, as we go down Rural, uh, to the east, and then into the, the, uh, activity area and parking on the left. Uh, here's a shot along, uh, Rural, and again, you can see where the step down is on the right toward Spence. Again, the architectural elements, one of the things that was, the last thing suggested, um, by the Apache group was that we go to three of the blue shades, uh, which we've now done, and we've altered the color orange, so it's more of a rust color. And I'll show you that material board in just one minute. Uh, here's a shot along Spence. Again, you can see where we have that, that, that step up, and really the only balcony type area is what you see here on that four-story element along Spence, otherwise we don't have any balconies anywhere else in the building. Um, the, uh, Tempe adopted the International Green Construction Code, uh, elements, and of course, we are going to achieve the civil level. So we have in chapter five, we have sites sustainability, including paving materials, reduction of light pollution, um, each primary building entrance will be provided with a pedestrian walkway that takes you to transit, et cetera. Water efficiency, we have irrigation system designs that are specific to the type of vegetation, again, so we, we save water. Um, with respect to energy, uh, we have star appliances, star washers, star dishwashers in each one of the units. The billing envelope, the billing envelope will comply with ANSI, A-C-A-S-H-R-A-E-N-I-E-S standards. I have no idea what those acronyms mean, but apparently that's, they're important for compliance with the green code. Um, again, TVs, office equipment will all be energy. Material emissions, billing materials and finishes will be specified that emit low emissions per this code section. Um, chlorofluorocarbon-based refrigerants, et cetera, will not be used. Um, and then finally, areas for storage, uh, collection will do recycling, you know, for all of the residents, and billing maintenance will store, dispose, and properly handle fluorescent lights and batteries and things like that. Um, this is the letter, uh, from, uh, Matt Selinger and, and Phil Amorosi, from the Citizens by the Apache Corridor. Again, we met with them several times, they were very helpful in the, in the design, so we very much appreciate their participation and support. Here's the material boards, uh, you can see the three different shades of blue, and then the more rust rather than an orange color, which we had before. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Mr. Wood. Appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, uh, I really like it that you have, um, trees all around the property. It looks, it looks really good. We really are trying to promote trees for Tempe, and this, it goes with it, so I appreciate it. And, uh, and then I, I'm glad you changed the, the, the materials from the, um, orange to more of a copper color or whatever. Yeah, it looks nice. So thank you, thank you very much for, um, um, this project.
Thank you.
And for working with the neighbors too.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, we have unanimous recommendation from DRC, and we're fine with all of the staff stipulations as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Vice Mayor Garland?
Orange really only looks good on a jacket, so let's just. Side of the building.
I looked up and I wasn't going to say anything.
Um, I really appreciate you putting the volunteer green codes on there. That's like, was going to be one of my questions to make sure, because meeting with your people earlier, I'm like, let's just make sure if you make a list, that'll be great, because it's nice to see that that's happening and that, that our, um, our, our builders and people who want to come into the community is really paying attention to that. It's voluntary, but we really want that in the city, so thank you so much. I drove down Spence to look at this area, and I, it, this building seems to fit in that area for, um, for what you're interested in doing. Um, and I do like the step down going to Spence. There's, you know, kind of some empty spots across the street on Spence, but it's still when things go there or whatever else is going to go there, I'd like, I think the step down was really smart, so I just want to say, I think it looks great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hodge?
Okay. Thank you. Well, I wanted to just tell you that orange looks good on every part. That's my, that's my color.
I kind of knew that was coming, actually.
Um, also, I, as I said, I think it just is what Vice Mayor and Councilmember Adams has said, it just fits right in. It's just like, it, it flows with that pattern. I think it's a great fit. I love the amenities. Um, I'm going to ask the question that I thought that Councilmember Adams would ask, is there a dog park somewhere near? But he was, she was tempted, so I decided to do it for her. Um, and, and my other question is, when you do the, when it's like four bedrooms or three bedrooms, is it a bathroom to each, um, bedroom, or is it like one or two bedroom? Is it more of like the house, of the student housing when you have a bathroom per bedroom, or is it?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, um, with respect to the, the bedrooms, each bedroom has its own bathroom, shower, as we call it, en suite. So the students would basically lease the bedroom, you know, rather than unit itself. Yes, there will be a place for dogs. Um, students seem to bring more dogs these days, so yes, there will.
Thank you for asking that question for me.
You're very welcome.
All right. Uh, any other comments or questions? All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Appreciate it. All right. So this is also a public hearing item, so if there's any public testimony, can you please get my attention now? Oh, yes, I forgot. Kim, I have a card from you. My apologies. Kim Gaffney Loza, please come forward. State your name and place of residence, even though I guess I just did it, uh, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Kim Gaffney Loza, uh, North Tempe. Um, I have to say, I really love the design. Um, I think it's a great project, especially with the use of green building codes. One thing I have a question about, though, is, um, I noticed a lot of hardscape, and it's, it's pretty condensed. Is there a way of retaining rainwater and water coming off the irrigation that could go back into the landscape? That would be my question. Other than that, I think it's a great project.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms., thank you so much. Uh, I guess I'll ask the question, uh, Mr. Wood, uh, because that question you could answer for us this evening? And if not, we could, we could definitely cover it during the second hearing. Yes, um, Councilmember Amber?
Actually, I was going to call Nick tomorrow and ask him that.
Oh, okay.
Because I mean, I went down to Tucson, and it was fantastic the way that they do the curb cuts down there, and they're able to actually capture what little, you know, monsoon weather that we do have here, but, uh, it's like a wonderful program, and I really appreciate all of the green stuff that he put in there, but I just thought maybe this would kind of push it over the edge.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to take that back to the client and, and see what I can come back with next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Um, once again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Councilmembers, any further comments or discussion? All right. Hearing none, one again, just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 19th, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving proposed updates to Chapter 14A, which is our historic preservation ordinance of the Tempe City Code by amending Section 14A-1 relating to purpose and intent, Section 14A-2 relating to definitions, Section 14A-3 relating to Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Preservation Officer, Section 14A-4 relating to designation of landmarks, historic properties, and historic districts, Section 14A-6 relating to guideline, standards, and process for review of alteration or new construction, Section 14A-7 relating to demolition and removal, Section 14A-9 relating to maintenance and repair, and Section 14A-11 relating to violations. This is a public hearing item as well. Is there any public testimony this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Uh, councilmembers, any comments or discussion? All right. Hearing none, just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 19th, 2024. Next item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to administration and the city code generally, dissolving the Engineering and Transportation Department, the Municipal Utilities Department, and Sustainability and Resilience Office, establishing the Public Works Department and the Transportation and Sustainability Department, relocating the Education, Career, and Family Services Office to the Community Health and Human Services Department, and relocating Neighborhood Services from the Community Development Department to the City Manager's Office. This is also a public hearing item. Is, is there any public testimony? Please get my attention now. All right. Uh, seeing none, I will turn to the council. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I, I really, um, like this change, and I appreciate the city manager for, um, leading the change. Thank you. It makes a lot more sense, since I've been here forever. Uh, it's, it's kind of going back to how it used to be when it was, functioned very well, so I'm, I'm happy about it.
Excellent. Uh, any further comments from council? All right. Hearing none, the second and final public hearing for this item is scheduled for September 5th, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 19, actually, you already did that, that one's done. So let's go to Section, uh, 8B5 is the next item, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a water line easement located on the east side of Hardy Drive and the south side of Elliot Road. This is also a public hearing item. If there's any public testimony, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Uh, council, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 19th, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a water line easement north of Rio Salado Parkway and east of Smith Road. This is also a public hearing item. Is, is there any public testimony this evening? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? All right. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 19th, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B7, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 800 East Divot Drive, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, council, any comments or discussion? All right. Once again, seeing none, again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 5th, 2024. The next item under the section is 8B8, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain city-owned properties located at 1906 East Meadow Drive and 5002 South Alder Drive, collectively known as the Properties, to the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Incorporated and Arizona Nonprofit Corporation, and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to convey property, covenants, deeds, and all other related documents necessary to effect such conveyances and related transactions. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? All right. Seeing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 5th, 2024. All right. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items scheduled for second hearing and final adoption, so votes will be taken on these items tonight. The first item under the section is 8C1, which is to adopt an ordinance for the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2024-25 budget year, nunk pro tunk, to correct a scripener's error in ordinance number O2024.27, previously adopted on June 27th, 2024. First time I've ever said nunk pro tunk. It's my 13th year up here, I've never had the chance to utter that phrase. Someone have to tell me what it actually means later. Um, just want to note, once again, this is not a public hearing item, as it's simply to correct a scripener's error in a previously adopted ordinance. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Garland and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Yes.
I'll just say yes.
Okay. And that also passes seven to zero. The next section, uh, ex item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for planned area development to modify development standards for building height and a development plan review for the addition of a 160-foot-tall manufacturing and warehouse building on 42.5 acres for project Elevate, located at 1850 West Elliot Road. The applicant is Kim Lee Horn. This is a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? Councilmember Amber?
Uh, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Amber, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Congratulations. The next item under the section is, is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located near South 52nd Street and West Green Tree Drive, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public testimon, public hearing item, I should say, so if there's any public testimony, can you please get my attention? All right. to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located near South 52nd Street and West Green Tree Drive, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public testimon, public hearing item, I should say. So if there's any public testimony, can you please get my attention? All right, there is none this evening, so I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Vice Mayor Garland. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2050 West Rio Salado Parkway, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item as well. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2060 West Rio Salado Parkway, and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item as well. If there's any public testimony, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning an existing water line easement on property located near College Avenue and University Drive. This is a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning an existing water line easement on property located west of Palm Walk South of University Drive on the Arizona State University campus. This is also a public hearing item. Is there any public testimony? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Amber. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C8, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of two eight-foot public utility easements located on the west side of Hardy Drive and south of Warner Road. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion? Do I have a motion? Moved by Vice Mayor Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Yes.
And that item passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. Just want to note, too, that councilmembers may also request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. This evening, I'm going to start with Vice Mayor Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one announcement. We're going to have a backstage pass event that's going to talk about what's going on in downtown Tempe, in their office development market, and hear about the trends in the urban office space. Cousins, the property manager of four of Tempe's developments that connect Tempe Town Lake and downtown Tempe, will provide a tour of Hayden Ferry Lakeside. It was the first mixed-use development on Tempe Town Lake and remains one of the city's larger and most successful projects. So it's Wednesday, September 25th. The free tours start at 6:00 PM, and if you have any questions, you can reach out to myself or my system.
Thank, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
No need for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, two announcements this evening. This Thursday, at the Tempe Center for the Arts, one of my favorite buildings in this community, we are going to have the dangers and legal consequences of driving while impaired for students and their parents, and, and also like how to improve your driving habits. So I would recommend that anybody that's learning how to drive, or it will be learning how to drive, attend that, and the best news is it's free. So please plan on tending with your youngsters, and that, that's a good thing. So our police department will be there helping out. A second announcement is Quanis Dog Park, and I know we talked about it before, but I just really am very happy about it. And one of the, the most, the thing I can't wait for is the dog agility. My, my puppy, a year and a half old, needs to jump over and over and over and over them. So I look forward to taking him to there and maybe wearing him out a little bit. So thank you. And I know that it'll start in September, the construction, and it'll probably be open for next summer. Is that correct? Around? Okay, June. Okay, all right, great. Thank you. So thanks for doing that, and, and please, it's a great way to get to know your neighbors, because you all have something in common, and I just really am looking forward to it and everyone getting to know their neighbors better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, first off, I want to say, because we won't be here for my birthday, so we're going to say happy birthday to Brudetta tonight, because my birthday is September 3rd. So I want to say happy birthday to me, because you got to enjoy your days, you know? You don't know how many more birthdays you have coming up, so you got to enjoy every birthday as it is. And I am proud to tell you a little bit about my, what I did over the summer. And on my breakfast of Brudetta, I did a water drive for the Hope team, and I got 15,000 bottles of water in one, in one-day event, but now I continue to raise. I got, I'm at 32,000 bottles of water right now throughout the city of Tempe, so and I'm going to continue on and push on, because my goal is to get to 50,000 by the end of the summer, by the end of the year, not summer. No way. I can't do that. I don't think I could do that. I think my, my assistant might quit, so, no, but that's my, my goal, to get it by the end of the year. Okay? And my next one is my backpack. What I did over the summer, because I really didn't have a vacation, I actually worked this whole summer, because school districts are back in. We raised, we got over 500 backpacks over the summer, and we distributed, we distributed throughout the, the schools and the system, and they didn't just come with just a backpack. They came with all supplies and a gift card from Starbucks for $10. So each kid got all that in there, and they were happy and excited, and I'm going to continue that on through the rest of the year. And I went on, it's called, it's called the Tour of the World, by the eyes of the city of Tempe. And I'm enjoying, I did the clerk's office, I had a wonderful lunch and dinner with them. I did the city attorneys. They told me all the legal things that I need not to do to get in trouble. The Tempe Police, I did my ride along with them, did, I did my 12 hours with them. Tempe Fire, I still got to finish that. And also, I want to let you guys know that I'm sliding down the pole. I'm already prepared for that. I'm ready for it. I'm going to prepare for it, and I'm ready. I'm sliding down the pole. No, we have one coming.
Do you?
Yes, we do. See, we do, we got one coming, and I'm ready. And also, I did a, 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 what is it, five hours with, with the park rangers? So, and it was a very eye-opening to see our park rangers at, at, at work. It was a great experience. And yes, the city council has been to Moore Park, because I was there five different times throughout that thing, so we can actually say that we do go out and see our parks. So thank you on that. And I think my last one, do I have one more? Oh, yes. So I did, just on the, on Friday the 23rd, the parks rangers asked me while I was out, they wanted us to do the same thing that we did, what I did for the Hope team, to do for the park rangers, and I got another 8,000 bottles donated from the park rangers. Then we had Sunt, and we had, was it Google Fiber? Google Fiber donated between that, they, they donated 8,000 bottles of water, and that's going to continue to help out with the park rangers, because they do give wat, they want to give out water when they go into the parks also. And I think that's my last one, isn't it? Yes, they already got, and they already got their chests and everything, so that's already been donated, and now they have their water, so thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Amber.
Thank you. I don't have any announcements, but I would like to thank Rosa and Councilmember Chin for kind of tutoring me through this, my very first, like, for real, like, where I got to vote on stuff other than, you know, the Vice Mayor meeting. So it's, it's way different being up here.